Call to order the board of selectmen meeting of Wednesday, March sixteenth, two thousand sixteen. Please rise for the political leaders.
Political leaders to the flag of the United States of America and the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, invisible with liberty and justice for all.
So we have on the agenda, the first agenda item is the continuation of the Chili Head public hearing. So we had already opened the hearing at our meeting on, probably with the date.
March second.
Second. So this is the continuation of the Chili Head BBQ public hearing. Transfer of license, transfer of stock and change of manager. So, Mr. Wong, I believe you're, do you have something that you would like to say?
I think more or less to answer questions of the board. And there were some issues that were raised, so if there are others, we must address them.
So I think what it was is we were, I think the last time that you were here, we, we, there were a couple of things that we needed. We needed, hold on a second here. Just let me try to get this right. It was workman's co- okay, so the documents that were still outstanding at that time, excuse me, were workman's compensation certificate of insurance, certificate of good standing from the Department of Revenue, and return receipts from the US Post Office proves, proving you had sent it butters notification. So those three things were the things that were outstanding, and that was why we continued the hearing to tonight.
Okay, I.
So have we received those documents?
No, I have the documents.
Oh, okay. The letter of clearance and also the workman compensation, so.
So you have the documents?
Did this information just come to you today?
Um, you're, you're, I was gonna ask that question, so, um, are the documents in order? Okay. So, the correspondence that we sent, that's dated March third, should these documents not be filed with the Board of Selectmen prior to March fourteenth? So we were expecting that we would receive those documents prior to March fourteenth, which is the day that the agenda for this meeting closes. So is there a reason why we got them today rather than prior to?
Request, except that it's matter of record that I expressed last, in the last hearing, that dealing with bureaucracy is the most challenging of times.
Right.
And to be honest with you, I travel a lot of places. And, and I'm forever fascinated and struck by how much potential America has. And I'm also extremely surprised to see how much bureaucracy and how slowly the bureaucracy works.
Okay, so.
Only as late, just let me just finish that, please. As late as a few days ago, we could not get documents from either party. And Hattie and Shorty went specifically to the office and it was finally, only able to obtain it by person as, like, as late as yesterday.
So the documents needed to be received in person. So the question that I asked is why they weren't available on March fourteenth? And your answer was, excuse me, sir. Your answer was, it's because of the bureaucracy.
That's true.
And, so, um, have we come across this in any of the other establishments? We have a lot of establishments in town. Have we come across this issue in other establishments? I think at the time that you were here, the last time that you were here, the reason that we gave you that extension was because you were having difficulty getting the paperwork? And so then on March third, we asked for you to give us this information by a certain date. And that date came and went, and we still didn't have, that was two days ago, we still didn't have what we needed. But this is the first time that I've heard of that kind of an issue. And I understand it's because of bureaucracy, but I don't understand why it was so difficult in this case, when we haven't come across this before.
I, I, I find it to be surprising and shocking, and it's a matter of record. Let's put it this way. We are both on the same wavelength in terms of getting the documents done and getting it processed. There's no reason for me to delay it, and there's no reason for you to question my intention to proceed as quickly as possible. So if there's any question about delay on our part, you can certainly place a call to Department of Revenue about, it certainly has not been an easy exercise. So, I mean, we just saw pledge to the, to the whole of the office, and I certainly have no problem about telling you that we made this best effort to do so. And if it's not good enough, then I think it's matter that it spoke to exactly what I'm saying. I cannot believe how slowly things move here. I cannot, I cannot give you more honest answer or better answer.
Okay, again, I would say to you that this is the first time I've come across this. I've only been on the board for six years, though, so I guess prior to that, maybe we've had issues of this nature where the bureaucracy got in the way of getting the appropriate paperwork. I can't speak to that, but it's the first time in, in the past six years that I've, you know, I've seen something like this happen, in that we continually got extensions and we continually waited and waited and still didn't get the paperwork when we requested it.
Well, perhaps if you want to send something on record and move it forward to the office, it's certainly more than disappointing to me, and I'm sure that the answer I'm giving you now is disappointing to the board. But I wish I could give you a better answer.
Mr. Young, another problem here is, you know, we're under rules of the open meeting law. And under the law, the post on the Thursday, and that's a deadline for us. Sometimes even on our own agenda, something's forgotten or something like that. It has to go to the next meeting, because it's not, it's got to be done at a timely fashion. I know what you're saying, but, you know, people that you work with, they're, and, and I, you know, I have feelings, you know, for people and that work and, you know, for the government, and, and I, and I know you don't always get something just like that. Sometimes you gotta wait, and that's, that's where I, but the only thing is, though, we have rules that we have to go by on this side. That's what I wanna bring point, see, and how we.
I do wanna make a point, is that certainly, there is big bureaucracy at the state level, at the federal government level, all the different levels. What I find from my experience of working on a local level, people understand the challenges of small business people, and they understand there are things that have, we have very little control. It's a big machine, and sometimes it's only so many times you can do. And failing, and, and it's a matter of record as well, you can play back the tape. We have had extremely difficult time getting hold of people on the phone. Therefore, we made personal visits to downtown Boston to knock on their door and ask them for their time and their attention to these matters. So I wish that the bureaucracy could stop here. And I understand rules and procedure as well, but even if we to bring it back again, the, the document is in place after a lot of effort, and I can assure you, it's not through the lack of effort. Because there's absolutely no reason for me to delay it, and I don't really enjoy particular expressing my disappointment and how this things worked. And I would hope that would ask for the last piece of leniency on the local board level.
I think I can clear this, this, this answer to your question.
Sir, could you state your name for the record?
Um, my name is Shorty Billings. We, we went down to the office yesterday to find out why we didn't get the paper in a, in a timely manner. And they said because they sent the paper to the wrong address. They sent the papers to a Quincy address instead of sending them to our address. That's, that's, that's the reason why we just got the paper yesterday.
But I think that, I think the, you know, the, the problem is the absentee owner obviously doesn't work. In a business like this where it's, it's time sensitive, I'm happy you're bringing on a partner that's gonna be here and be active. If you are here and present and focusing on this business, we wouldn't be to this point now. Everything would've gone smoothly. And now we have a, a manager on hand that's there, let's hope they stay there, let's hope you're successful. But this isn't the type of business you can run from another country and, and not be handled.
Well, that's why I, I made it very clear that I felt that with the obstruction or the obstacles I was facing, it makes sense to bring on somebody local that stands on, and that brings forward the whole process and also the application that you have in front of you.
But if I do that, it didn't help you get the paperwork in by the time you are. So, um, so the board is gonna have to decide whether you're gonna accept that, um, accept that information at this time, pass the deadline. The board's gonna have to say whether they agree with accepting it, pass the deadline. And we also need to have a discussion about, at the last, at the beginning of the hearing, there were violations that were identified by Sergeant Warner as well as the health agent. And we need to know whether those violations have been rectified or we've done anything with those things as well.
I'll make a motion that at the recommendation of the liquor enforcement officer, a letter of reprimand be sent to the applicant.
I'll second the motion.
Move to second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
I'll have a hand up, out there.
Can I please say something?
Sure, would you state your name, please?
My name is Hattie Barry. Through all of this, through all of this going on, I lost my mother a few days ago.
I'm sorry to hear that.
And, you know, I'm ripping and running, I'm ripping and running, trying to get all these documents. And I should've been spending the time, but I lost her. And then I sit here, and I hear, and I hear this. And I'm saying, why did I not stay with her if this is gonna end up like this?
And like what, we're taking the recommendation of the liquor enforcement officer, then we'll vote on renewing the license?
Right.
Which is standard for every violation.
The, um, so the viola- the letter of re- uh, reprimand from Sergeant Warner, okay? There's also the issues with the health agent based on an inspection that was conducted on March second. Has anything been done in that, in that day?
He was there today.
Health agent was there today? Do we have any correspondence from him as to his findings?
Excuse me. I spoke to the health agent this afternoon. There was basically two violations that he was concerned of. One has been addressed, the other one is in the process of being addressed. The health agent has requested that we provide the establishment a little bit more time for them to be able to secure a private vendor and handle that other complaint.
Okay, so the motion was for the liquor license, right?
Correct.
Good, okay. So we've already voted on the liquor license, um?
You voted on the reprimand letter?
The reprimand letter, I'm sorry.
Before you now.
But then there were two licenses, there's the liquor license and the common vic license, correct?
It goes together because they're on premise and they have to serve food with it, so you just voted on them.
Yes.
So your technical votes on the transfer of ownership, change of manager, and transfer of stock.
For, first of all, the, um, the rectif- to rectify the health agent's second suggestion there, or that it's in process?
Uh, yep, what I would do is, is that I would make a motion if the board is inclined to approve the requests subject to final inspection by the health inspector.
So moved. That's for the transfer and change of manager?
That's for the change of, okay. With the health, with the health agent's, um, confirmation that, that second violation has been corrected?
Correct, and, and my recommendation is that you should probably put a date on it. I'm, I'm not exactly sure what's fair and reasonable, I mean, is, is, do you believe that you can have a vendor come in and handle what they need to in two weeks, or do you think, or three weeks, or do you need more time than that?
Okay, may I ask?
I would say three weeks.
Because your next meeting's in three weeks.
Okay.
Yeah, I'd like to speak on this subject if I may. And since I've taken over the ownership in May of last year, we have had inspection from the building inspector and the health inspector. I would say, at all times, any violation of any nature was very minor of, of any significance. And also, it is to, to my interest to maintain a clean and tidy place as well. So the two violations that was mentioned, one is already been addressed. The other one was the cleaning of the, um, the beer lines. So we actually went through the inspection with the health inspector, and also we checked with the service provider. And because the, actually the beer is, is, is connected to a pressurized system from the back room into the tap. So if there was anything that is exposed in any healthy ma- relating matter of health, that would affect the internal line. So the inspection is, I mean, just let me just, just, this is very technical.
You can finish, but what you're telling me is information that I would rather get from the health inspector, because that's what he does, that's his job, and he's, he's qualified to make statements like that. So we have a motion to accept it with the, um, with the rectification of the, with, to have the health inspector's suggestions rectified by April sixth. That's the motion.
Yep.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second.
Move to second, are all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So at this point, your request has been approved? However, if in three weeks, you, you fail your, your inspection, then the board at that point is gonna have to, is gonna be forced to revoke your license at that point.
Okay.
Just so you're clear.
Well, I do wanna speak on a matter of record. First of all, all the visits made by the inspectors, then any violation of any nature has been very minor as far as has been communicated to us. And I, and I thank you for the extension for the three week period to get that last minor violation done. Because what I'm speaking of is both, I'm talking to the service provider as well as the health inspector people, that there is nothing of, of any imminent health. And trust me, I do not want to serve anything that would be of negative consequence, so.
That's the stop talking lane.
Enter, enter a motion, um, I'll entertain a motion to close the hearings.
I know the body language.
I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So, so moved.
Second.
Move to second, are all those in favor? Aye, public hearing is closed, thank you. Entertain a motion for recess.
So moved.
Move to second, are all those in favor?
Aye.
The board of selectmen meeting for Wednesday, March sixteenth. So we're starting with agendas, I mean, on the agenda, budgets? Sorry, and the first budget on the agenda is Steve Swirey and the building inspector. So if you can go through, I'd like to go through all four of them, you know, and then we'll take a vote on all four of them together. You guys agree with that?
Yeah, I just lost it, where's?
I books.
It's in I books, yeah.
All right.
All right, so nineteen forty, town hall budget, Mr. Swirey?
Good evening, Honorable Selectmen. All right, let's start with the building. And not much of a change, maybe a slight minor change in the building. We've been able to keep pretty much all the costs based on electrical, plumbing, heating, uh, much of the same. For instance, heating's gonna stay the same at six thousand, electrical's gonna stay the same at thirteen. Property maintenance, janitorial, thirteen, six, is gonna stay the same. Office maintenance, eight, uh, we did, excuse me, I shouldn't say that. We did up the office repair and maintenance a hundred dollars because of the town clerk's copier. We supply, um, the ink and the repairs for, for that copying machine. Boiler repair, we kept at seven hundred. I did up the municipal building repairs. As you know, Jerry, every year it keeps going up, repairs on the building, lights, doors, the standard maintenance. Telephone, we based it on the past couple of years that it was, um, uh, down from what we were, were approved for. So we brought that line item down approximately thirteen hundred dollars.
Why is that, do you think? Why is that?
I don't know, I'm, a lot of these, these budgets were in place before I even took over the building, and we've kinda carried them through because we have the seams up and down. I think mainly because maybe the service is now less because of how much is being used, cell phone.
Is it based on traffic?
I, you know, I don't know.
You see through something?
I don't know. I know that, that's just that through the accountant's office, we, we get the, you know, we get the, the bill that we sign out for the phone, so I just, I based on the past, the past years, it was so low, I, I declined, you know, moved it down to cover it.
Okay.
Custodial supplies, we kept the same. Elevator maint- uh, maintenance went up a little bit, um, not a, a huge amount, but that's contractual. And we ended up with a, oh, I'm sorry, and sprinkler maintenance, we keep, we keep sprinkler maintenance every year because every so often we have to get it inspected. Usually what happens, if there's any overlay with, that money goes into repairs to the building, if, if it comes out of it. And I ended up with a, a final budget of fifty-five thousand, seven oh six. And last year I was approved for fifty-six, two oh two, so there was a, a sma- a little bit of a, a negative this year for the town hall budget.
So how's the heating system, working pretty good or?
Yeah, we did the boiler about two years ago, we replaced the center boiler. We usually use the money for the boil- uh, the boiler money to have the, come in every so often because, because of the way the building's designed, where everybody's got thermostats in every single office, sometimes you get air in the lines, and a lot of times you'll get one office that's too hot. And that's when you have to drain it down and fill it back up and pull the air out. So that's, it gets used for that in mine and maintenance. The other two boilers were, when we did the middle boiler, were in very good shape as far as what the installer told me, so we, we have some time left, you know, as far as I know on the other boilers. We, we, we keep pretty good look on them, watch. I go down often to check to make sure there's no water on floors. Especially at the beginning of heating season, we check on them at the most. And that's pretty much, so.
All right, building inspector?
Building inspector, okay.
You need to go through just anything that has a, a.
A change?
Yeah.
All right, pretty much the, the building department is almost exact all the way through. I, I did put in a, a, I didn't know what to put in because it's a contract year for me this year. So I did base my budget just on a number of two and a half percent, just to, just to put it in there. I know that there's negotiations this year with me, so I kinda left that, that one open. But pretty much all the way down the line, um, there is literally no change unless there's a change in contractual to administrators, because the union, that's, you know, I don't base it on what their contractual is. So, uh, my budget for the building department ended up being a hundred and thirty-three thousand, two hundred and thirty-seven.
The gas and plumbing?
Gas, uh, gas and plumbing inspector and the electric inspector carry the same budget, they're the same. We, our electrical inspector and plumbing inspector, in comparison to all of the towns, were fairly low. So I tried to put in two percent for them yearly without trying to make it crazy. So I am asking for two percent for the electrical and plumbing inspector, which increases their budget from, and like I said, they have the same, they have the same light out of it. So it's a, it's an increase from fourteen oh two six of two thousand sixteen approved to fourteen two five seven of fiscal seventeen.
So move, pass them on to finance committee.
Move to second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Genetically.
One, one item, though, is, is that he was also going to speak real briefly to the proposed vacant bylaw.
Okay.
That is, I see that's a nine one as well.
Yeah, discussion on zoning bylaw, is that right?
Yep.
Okay.
I reviewed the proposed bylaw, um, I really don't, I don't see a problem with it. The only problem I do see with it in some of the registration end of it is you gotta be careful because any property that is being leased or waiting to be rented or for sale, um, I spoke to another couple of towns, someone doesn't fall under that registration because even though it's empty, if, if it's being, uh, if it's, if it's got a for lease sign or for, or are looking to sell, it kinda falls under a different bracket, so it's the only part that we gotta be careful about, which that is something that I can work out if this, if this gets, if this does get passed through the, the town, we can work out some sort of a system in that case. I find most of our commercial buildings in town don't really have a problem. It's tough when you get down to the Bertorelli area in there, because it's, it's a bunch of small buildings. It is very hard for the building inspector and the fire department to see which ones are open and which are not, because they're all small, small units. And that's not really, they're units, that's not a building, so that is pretty much the only one. At, at this point right now, there's not, I can't even, the only vacant building we have right now is, one is being repaired from damage from snow, and that would be Piazza's building of fifty-six where the candy store was, but that's being repaired right now, they had to put a whole new roof on, roof on that building. McLaughlin's building, where DeAngelo's sub shop area was, the, the business, that's been repaired, but, um, they're roof caving, and they're repairing it. And Bane's Electric is moving into that building. I don't know if the board also knows that the Sullivan Tire building has been taken over by Beacon Sales has come and moved to Brockton, Beacon Sales has moved their whole area to West Bridgewater, vinyl siding, vinyl windows, roofing, construction supplies. Me and the fire department just went there yesterday and gave them a final occupancy too. We just did all the fire alarms to move in. So we're finding that West Bridgewater is pretty much, buildings are getting filled back up. Even the old Lucini building that had the, um, construction equipment, Mr. Lucini came back and is back in that building with his bus business. So there's not a lot of commercial or industrial buildings in town that are empty because, as you know, the vicinity of twenty-four, it is a prime location for commercial or industrial, so.
That actually incorporates any business not keeping their business in, in order.
Right.
We have one up on the Brockton line. One of the arguments is we don't have a problem, and the building inspector already has tools to be able to enforce cleaning up the yards, but from our conversations, that's not true, there is.
Yeah, I do not, yeah, at this point, I do not have any mechanism or tool to make someone have their lawn fixed or the cleanliness. And believe it or not, I just was at a seminar with, um, the building inspector, we had a seminar, and we had some speakers there that deal with blight. And a lot of blight, almost seventy-five percent of it falls under Board of Health because we're building, it's hard to get the, when it comes to surface and trash, that falls under more of the, more of the, the Board of Health. But, you know, it, it's very tough for me, I can't, when we do, as I'm sure, as I get calls, I'm sure the selectmen's office get plenty of calls on properties, um, it is, you know, it, it's, it's tough when there's someone living in the property, it's almost impossible. It's also when people paying their taxes on the property and there's nothing that's owed, it also becomes an issue because you gotta be careful with stepping on civil rights. That is the, and that's the biggest thing, especially as a building inspector, we have seminars with the state, is make sure you don't step on civil rights, because that, you do not want that coming back to your town. So sometimes me and Rob, who is Board of Health agent, we do go at these property and we do gingerly, you know, look at these as best as we can to decide what to, to do with it. But I have, I have really no issue, uh, it's a little bit more work as far as the registration and everything, but I'm the zoning enforcement. But I'm the zoning enforcement agent and if a bylaw is passed in the town of West Bridgewater, my job is to enforce the bylaws of the town of West Bridgewater. So, you know, it literally comes down to the town voting if they want to do it. As far as residential, we do know we have a few properties in town that are, I'd say since I've been here in five and a half years, I would say probably two-thirds of have taken care of themselves. And that's also the nature of the real estate market. When the market is great, properties are more valuable. We still have a couple more that we have issues with and we do look into them and, you know, I just went out, Matt, we just went out. Jackie had sent me out to one about three days ago to look at, so. But I really do not have any issues as far as just, it's more, you know, trying to figure out once it's voted in, the mechanism on how we, you know, how we handle it. And that's pretty much, that could be with the selectman and myself on, you know, the discussion that I have no, I have no issue. Or, I'm sorry, or Dave.
Thank you for the update.
Okay.
Very good.
All right. Thank you. Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Right.
Data processing. Budget fifteen fifty?
Hey, how are you?
How are you doing? Good, how about you?
Pretty good.
How are you doing? You okay there?
I've been better.
I know, I saw you over there kind of uncomfortable, huh?
Yeah, I need a knee replacement.
Oh, do you?
Yeah, partial.
Lucky that.
It's weak.
Oh, really?
Yeah, it got bad, really bad, really quick.
Just make sure you do the therapy afterwards because otherwise you're going to regret it.
That's just what everybody says. Do what they tell you to, you'll be good.
Well, good luck.
Thank you.
Okay, fifteen fifty?
Okay, data processing coordinator, I put in for three percent raise, which I've done every year. Office equipment and repair maintenance, I kept it as status quo and GIS engineering, same thing. Data processing services, that's KVS and Revised, which is the webpage. There's been a couple of increases with those and that's just reflected into that, on that price. The consultant, that's Hubtech and that line, that's Hubtech and all the renewals and so forth. That line is the one that's shared with the water department and the school department. We had an increase from Hub this year. They haven't taken an increase in two years. And then the rest basically falls into renewals. Now, a lot of the equipment that was purchased with the new school, they put the longest warranty on those pieces of equipment that's available. So a lot of those are not going to come up for renewal for at least two more years. But, you know, the time will come that they will need to be renewed. Internet connection, bumped that up just a little bit because when we did budget last year, we really hadn't, didn't have everything all finalized with Windstream and also our E-rate. So I think I'm going to be just a little bit light on that this year. So I increase that a little bit. Computer, network equipment supplies and computer equipment, I kept basically status quo.
Okay. All right, any questions?
I have none. Motion to move on. Second?
Move second and all's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Also while you're here, we do also have a request for transfer of funding. If it's further on the internet, we'll talk about it now if we can.
Sure. So back in early January, the transfer request in your packet is on page fifty-nine. But back in early January, the internet service for both the town and for the school department was beginning to fail.
It was actually the whole network service.
So it was the whole network, but the reality is we were out of business. We couldn't send emails, we couldn't access our, we couldn't access our documents. Mr. Sarrow got involved, contacted, we had a contact. We put a new switch in over at the Howard School. The cost was about thirteen thousand dollars. I asked him at that point to take it out of his local budget so we could pay for it and just get the town back up and running. We actually were down about one full day while that service was being placed and taken care of. And at this point, we're going to request that the thirteen thousand dollars be replenished back into his budget from the FinCon Reserve, which would require a vote from this board and a vote from the finance committee, which meet tomorrow night.
Motion to recommend the transfer. Second?
Second and all's in favor?
Aye.
All right, unanimous. Thank you.
Keep the job explaining it.
Take it easy, Eric.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Next thing, the agenda is the school department, if they're out in the hall, Mr. Sarrow, would you send them in?
Can we come in?
So we may, come on in. Need us some time. It's still five minutes over, but. Good evening, ladies.
Hi.
Hello.
You're all messing me up here.
How are you?
Hello, how are you?
Good.
Hi, how are you?
Hi.
Okay, so.
Other people might be coming, but.
I'm starting to cough in. Nancy, you're going to take that stuff out.
Yeah, you can start.
We start?
Chia, can we start?
We may, please.
Madam Chia present?
Yeah, we're good?
Yes, please. Thank you.
All right, so. What's it, three thousand education?
You sound like you really well. You sound really well.
You sound as bad as you sound?
Yeah.
Awesome. Let's make this quick, Nancy.
Elton, move over.
Well, yeah, my mom wants out the window here, you know. Bad with Jerry.
Terry's on the hall?
Don't blame me, you should put him on the wall.
Well, he started.
Oh, you started it?
He did.
He gets it because he's on planes.
Thank you.
That's how you got it.
I just got a plane call.
Hi.
Good evening.
Go ahead, you can start.
So we have the FY seventeen school budget to present. We'd like you to please note that the first column states the total school budget. The second column states the amount that's contributed by the school through the grants and revolving accounts. And the third column entitled FY seventeen appropriation request is the amount that the school department is requesting for appropriation for, by the town. For fiscal year seventeen, twenty seventeen, the total school budget is thirteen million, six hundred and twenty-seven thousand, one hundred and forty dollars, of which the school is funding one million, nine hundred and ninety-nine thousand, six hundred and sixty-two dollars. And of that is comprised, it's made up of the school choice funds of one million, three hundred and twenty-five thousand, eight hundred and twenty-eight, grants in the amount of three hundred and fifty-eight thousand, nine hundred and forty-six dollars, and the revolving accounts of three hundred and fourteen thousand, eight hundred and eighty-eight dollars. This budget represents a fiscal year twenty seventeen appropriation request of eleven million, six hundred and twenty-seven thousand, four hundred and seventy-eight dollars, which is an increase of five hundred and four thousand, seven hundred and eighty-six dollars over the FY sixteen appropriation. So as you can see on the front page, we have six areas to know within the budget. And five of the six are either federal state mandates or contractual obligations. So the first one is for the separation benefits for retiring staff per contractual agreement, which is the contractual obligation of fifty-five thousand, eight hundred and ninety-five dollars. And then item number two to note.
Sorry, hold on a second. Just out of curiosity, where are we in the, where are we in the contracts?
We are negotiating as we speak.
All right.
Okay. Item number two is a federal mandate, which is twenty-five thousand dollars for the McKinney-Vento transportation.
Who is that?
That's for the homeless.
If they get displaced or anything like that, we still need to transport them to the school that they are either currently attending or want to attend.
Right.
We usually co-share with the town that has, that they're residing in to bring them back here, so.
Right. So if they're going to the West Bridgewater Public Schools and they lose their house or because they have to go and live in a shelter in Brockton or live with a relative somewhere else, they have the right to either go to where they are living or they have the right to stay in the school system that they were previously in. If they decide to stay in West Bridgewater, then we have to provide transportation for them.
So every day, back and forth?
Mm-hmm.
Every day. And it can be quite expensive.
And so what is this, so is it by our, do we use our industry transportation or we use like?
It could be taxi.
It could be a taxi. It could be that we contract with North River Collaborative that does some of our special education. It could be that we call Lucini's and see if they have some out-of-district transportation. So we've used taxis before, so.
Depends on the location.
Depends on the location, depends on the timing that their school day starts.
So how does that number determine, how did you go up twenty-five thousand?
Based on, based on who we have now in the district and what we've, what we've used.
Yeah. We've already paid today seventeen thousand, five hundred and sixteen dollars for this year.
How much?
Seventeen thousand, five hundred and sixteen. We still have one month to go.
And so that's been about the same. And the thing is, we know that we will have some that will still be in that position because it could be up for a couple of years that they could be in that situation. But it can just happen tomorrow too. So they, so we're looking at past, past usage and that's how we anticipate what it is.
Is this the new that just has been mandated now? We've already, it sounds to me like we've already been doing it?
It just, it seems like the cost of it going up more, so I really wanted it as a separate line for easier tracking and for my end of the year report, I have to.
Yeah, we used to put it in, we used to put it in with just out-of-district transportation.
Oh, okay.
But because the cost is going up and because the state keeps saying, the legislature keeps saying, we need to give reimbursement to towns for the McKinney-Vento Act or the, it gets cut when they do that. But in, it makes sense for us to have it on a separate line item because if the reimbursement does come back, then we would have it calculated for our audit right in the separate line item.
Item number three is for the in-district transportation increase, which is the final year of contract. And again, that's the state mandate and that amount is forty-nine thousand, seven hundred and ninety-six dollars. Item number four.
So now wait a minute.
Sure, sorry.
No, that's okay.
It's fine.
So the transit, so we're in the final year of the contract.
Three-year contract with Lucini's Motors for our in-district.
We would be negotiating that next year?
Twenty-seventeen, yep.
Okay. And where does the fuel stand in there? Like, do we have, like, what do we do with the fuel?
We have a fuel adjustment clause and I actually spoke to Will the other day because I calculate it every month. And right now we are obviously saving money.
Right.
So before we pay the last month's bills, we'll have everything calculated and I would just deduct it from his bill. Or if it then goes on to June, they can cut us a check.
So is that factored in here someplace?
Yeah, basically I don't have, no.
No, because.
We don't know what next year's going to be like.
Yeah.
But I did take out the fuel adjustment. We usually carried about four thousand in it, but I took that out because I don't foresee us having to pay them.
Yeah. And in the beginning of this contract, we did have to pay them because it kept going up and up and up.
Yeah, like two years ago, so, yeah. Okay. All right, thank you. So now you got the step, step and track it changes, that's contractual, right?
Yeah. And as Dr. Ollie just said, we're in negotiations for fiscal year twenty seventeen on that. So that's two hundred and thirty-two thousand, five hundred and sixty-nine dollars. And item number five is seventy-three thousand, four hundred and forty-five dollars for the all-day kindergarten classes. And again, that's partially funded through school choice. That's for the no tuition. And I believe we have.
What portion of that is school choice?
I think there was about thirty thousand that came from the remaining of the all-day revolving kindergarten account. Let me look at that page. So I put in, so it's probably about a hundred and thirty thousand dollars for a school choice. School choice is funding a hundred and thirty of the all-day kindergarten, of the kindergarten teachers.
I'm confused.
But what, what portion of the seventy-three thousand is funded by school choice?
Oh, okay, I got you. Fifty thousand.
Wow. So, because there was thirty thousand left in that revolving account from before, so what happens next year? Because there's not going to be that thirty thousand.
It's not going to be. Hopefully we can continue funding it with school choice, depending on the size of the class.
Okay.
And the last area to note is for the agricultural school tuition and the Independence Academy tuition. Again, this is a state mandate for eighty-two thousand, three hundred and eighty-three dollars.
We have a couple extra kids that are applying to the Aggie School, which is expensive. It's twenty-two or twenty, twenty-two thousand dollars a year for tuition plus transportation. We also are using Independence Academy, which is a recovery high school that the state pays half of the tuition for a recovery high school and the school is mandated to pay the other half, which is about ten thousand dollars. And that's the recovery high school right now that's right up at the fairgrounds in Brockton. So it's for addicted kids that are substance addicted and have committed to sobriety for at least thirty days and then they can go to Independence Academy because it's not helpful for them to get clean for thirty days and then come back to the environment that they were in before. So having them go for, to a school that is clean and sober and helps with counseling, all that stuff, helps them get back on track, but they still don't skip a beat and they can still get the high school diploma. They don't necessarily always have to stay there till the end. Maybe they could come back. But it's something that is new and it's one thing that now with the governor passing that substance abuse bill, I know that they're looking to find more state funds to help these recovery high schools so that the burden isn't as much on schools because we're going to unfortunately right now probably have more and more kids that may have to go to that type of a school. But by law, we have to pay the ten thousand dollars right now.
Okay, so of the, of the, so of the million nine nine nine, so of the two million dollars that the school is funding, the budget, the school choice section is like sixty percent of that. So you know what I'm going to ask you.
How are we going to know school choice numbers?
Yeah, so what's that delta now?
Unfortunately. Fortunately and unfortunately, fortunately, we've been doing such a good job in the school system that we are getting more people moving into town. But also, Nancy, you remember being on the strategic planning committee way back when out of a class of, you know, eighty kids, forty-five of them were leaving to go to private school and we, part of the strategic plan was we've got to figure out why this is happening and we did a lot of work and stuff. We only have one student applying to a private school this year in the freshman class. And usually we have maybe three or four, which is still low. So because of that, we don't have as much space obviously to take school choice kids. We are graduating thirty-eight, thirty-six or thirty-eight, thirty-eight school choice kids this year.
Size of what?
Gosh, I think a hundred and eleven.
So a third of the class?
Yep. So thirty-eight we're graduating. And I had well over a hundred applications and I can take about twenty.
Thirty percent, that's a third of the class. Is that like a blip?
Yeah.
It's definitely a.
It's a blip because it was a low class, yeah.
Oh, okay.
So.
Like twenty-ten.
Yeah. Yeah, that's a blip. Most of them have like, well, not too much of a blip though. Most of them have in the twenties.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But we're just full.
This is shrinking.
It is shrinking.
We're full and even with kindergarten this year, we just got the census and usually on the census it comes in around sixty, sixty-one, and then you might get a few here and there that didn't go on the census. And we can add some choice kids if we want, if we want four sections. And the census came back eighty, like eighty-nine. So it's like the population of the little ones is going up. So that means over time, we won't have space for school choice kids. So we're going to, and this is the first year that I struggled, I didn't have a lot of spots to put them in. So again, the good news is kids are staying here and not opting to go to private school because we're doing a good job. The bad news is kids are staying here, so we can't put choice kids in and get the money. But it's better off having the good news that we're doing a good job, so the kids are staying here, so.
Yeah, so funding, you know. Yeah, so funding, you know, one point three million year after year after year, probably not gonna happen.
School choice kids, once they're in the system, they can stay, they have a right to stay through twelfth grade, correct?
Yes, they have to.
A lot of scare, people saying, you know, that used to live in town, or had to move out of town or whatever, that my kid's gonna lose this slot because so-and-so is gonna build nine hundred houses, and so.
No, the school choice kids have to stay. What we would do, if there were nine hundred houses and kids that we would just couldn't accept anymore, and say, okay, we gotta get this group through, and.
Would it be overcrowded?
Yeah, that would, well, I don't think it would happen all at once, though.
No.
Because slow, I mean, you're gonna be able to anticipate, you're gonna be able to anticipate it. The, the, the part is, if you go through a full cycle of twelve years, that would hurt if you were taking no choice kids after that.
Right.
Um, substantially hurt.
Um, can I have one more question here? I can't remember where it was, can I hold on one second? Okay, the difference in FTEs in SPED? What's that all about?
To meet the IEP needs, really.
One of it is, um, adding a full-time, um, special needs teacher at Rose L. McDonald because of the severe, heavy-duty needs that are on a number of kids' IEPs that are coming up through the system. And that's another thing, we are keeping kids in the least restrictive environment, which is the, you know, what we want by law, is to keep them in the least restrictive environment. Well, to be able to do that, we have to fulfill their IEPs. And, um, at the McDonald School, we have two full-time teachers, and we need a third. Um, in addition to that, um, we have a.
So you need a third because of the increase in the amount?
Needs.
Of, of the needs, so it's not the amount of?
Not really the amount.
It's the level of need.
It's the level of needs of the kids coming up from the kindergarten, that the parents and us, we want them to stay in the least restrictive environment, but we need, but we have a number of heavy-duty needs coming up. And so we also need an instructional assistant, and we need to increase by a part-time, um, behavior specialist at the, at the Howard and the middle school due to some of the needs there. So it's all because of IEPs.
So is there some kind of ratio that the state's asking you to, to, is there some kind of mandate that the state says you have to have a certain ratio of instructors to needs?
No, you have to look at, um, all of the individualized ed plans, look at the service grid, and make sure every single bit of service, every hour that's on there is covered. And, that's what the special ed teaches, and that's what the special ed director does. And if it's not covered, you have to have a person to cover those things. So, if in a team meeting, certain things go on there, you have to have a person. If you don't have the personnel, you have to add them. So, it's all IEP-driven.
Okay. So then, the other question I have was kind of a general question. We already talked about this with, um, with the police department, when we talked about the need for a resource officer. So, is there any discussion at the school committee level as far as, um, any, any, um, relief as far as funding that position? You guys talk about that at all?
No, what we talked about is what we presented to you, which was, it should be, it was, you know, can you add the one point oh to the, to the police budget?
Yeah, I'm just asking if there was any further discussion at the school committee level as to any ways that you could find to help with that, that's all. I mean, I know, we talked about that it would come out of the police department if we could, if we could find a way to budget it that way, but I just wonder if there's any further discussion.
No, because we were under the, um, impression that because of who they would report to and how we wanted it set up, that it would totally be under the auspices of the police budget. But if it, if we knew we should've, then we would've added it in ties, but we didn't.
No, all right, I, I understand what you're saying. And, and I'm not saying that, that the school department would fully fund it. I'm just asking if there was discussion, or there will be discussion maybe in future budgeting, that, that the school department can pick up a portion of it, or.
We can pick up a portion, but we'd, we'd have to add it to our budget, it's not in our budget right now. So, if that's what is wanted, we'll add another point five FTE for an SRO.
Yeah, right, but it would increase your budget, right, I get what you're saying, yeah.
I mean, obviously, we can look at grants to see if there's anything to help it get started, but the police might actually have better access to those.
They actually did look, I know, I'm, they actually did look, and.
Yeah, I, I, I'm not, I'm not asking that you guys do that, I'm just asking if this, if that's still.
Is it in the police budget?
Open discussion, well, we haven't done the police budget yet, so. We haven't, we, we haven't reviewed it yet, but we're going, they're gonna do that at eight fifty-five tonight. All right. I just wonder if there's any further discussion about, that's all.
No, the further discussion was, we are hoping that the police are putting it in their budget, because if they're not, we don't know that, and we didn't put it in ours.
Yeah, well, it's in there, but.
Well, you know how.
I don't know how far it's gonna go, it's in there.
You all, is that what you have questions, Nancy?
Yes, I am, sorry.
Let's go back to number one, the fifty-five. Now, how many, uh, uh, people are retiring off your staff there?
There's actually six this year.
Six.
Six, now, do you have any kind of a system to, uh, like, in the general government, uh, we buy back, you know, sick leave, things like that, and, uh, do you have any kind of a system like that to, uh,
Yes, we have.
The cost of this?
We have, um, they can buy back twenty-five percent of their, which is a maximum of forty-five days.
Yeah.
If they have a hundred and eighty days of sick time at the time, they can get forty, a maximum of forty-five, no more than forty-five sick days, they can buy back. So I know with that, I know even with the, the decrease that the town did, that's, we're still significantly lower in the buyback than the town departments.
Yeah, you know, I was wondering, you know, the money you set aside or anything for that, and, because you anticipate it's coming.
Yeah, contractual, you know, contractual benefits.
Yeah, you know, like, I know that school resource, and we'll be going over the school budget, but we already told it's in there. Uh, and, uh, of course, that's tradition. Now, you know how this board has been very, very friendly, and I realize that, you know, the mandates that you have there, that where a lot of the cost comes out there. But then, on, on, on our side of the government, I mean, this is a big hit for our budget. With the total budget, with, with the rest of the things that are coming in, and, and as they come in here, too. I'm gonna have to have some talk, there's some people definitely gonna be talked to that are down here in our budget tonight, okay? Uh, Dave, I have a question of you now, uh, under two and a half. We can only appropriate, uh, so much money, uh, and how does this fit into your thing? How much under two and a half plus the new growth do we have for money? You know, you know, nobody, when we talked about these budgets, we noticed, but we do have a system that we have to go by. You, we only have so much money. Dave, what, what is the total that we can appropriate under, under this, and we have to spend for that total budget?
So, I'm going to, I'm gonna give a vague answer, because I don't know the exact dollar amount.
I just wanna borrow back a vague, you know, I just kinda wonder, but you know.
But our levy limit last year was around twenty-two million, so two and a half percent of that would probably be about five hundred thousand dollars. Uh, last year, we did new growth, uh, we normally budget about two hundred and fifty to three hundred thousand dollars. So, three hundred plus five hundred, we probably have about eight hundred thousand dollars to play with before any additional state aid or other sources.
And, and hopefully, that, if you saw the governor's budget, we don't know if the governor's budget will, will stay the way it is and all things, although the legislature is trying to actually push them to even increase chapter seventy even more. But, we were, we're fortunately one of the towns that our chapter seventy actually doubled this year.
Five hundred and eighteen thousand, with the governor's budget right now.
With the governor's budget, so, being that, and I know that chapter seventy goes into the town part, and it can help everyone, but it is earmarked for education.
Right.
So, that's five hundred and eighteen thousand dollars in chapter seventy, and.
Asking for five hundred and four.
We're asking for five hundred and four thousand, so, we know that it helps float everyone, but they are increasing chapter seventy money also, so.
So, um, I will, at nine-ten, we get to go over all our state-county assessments, which is both the incoming and the, the debits as well. Um, I will say, just on that note, that I'm always concerned about balancing the school budget on the state aid, because state aid could leave tomorrow. I actually had a meeting yesterday with a different town that is in the process of attempting to do a, uh, override, because they have been so heavily reliant on state aid that they can no longer pay their bills. So, I'm not saying not anybody near that, but I would just say that the Dr. Oakley is absolutely correct. That number is increased, it's awesome that it's increased, hopefully it stays that way. Uh, the House is going to release their budget on April thirteenth, we'll see as to whether or not that is consistent. Hopefully it is. Um, I think the spirit of what I'm just saying is that there's no guarantee that in future years that that increase would remain. And so, I, I don't wanna always be reliant on that money to balance a budget, because one day, um, we wake up, may wake up, and, and may not always be there.
Okay.
No, that's like choice money, too. We're using that to balance our budgets, one day we are gonna wake up, and it's probably not gonna be there.
You should also have to consider that, of all the budgets, this particular budget, the school department's budget, um, fifteen percent of that is funded by the school. So between the school choice money and the grants and the revolving accounts, fifteen percent of that money is funded by the school. So fifteen percent of that, that whatever that adds up to, um, we don't have to put in our budget.
Right, right.
And, um, because of that, the change over time, um, most towns, the school budget is over fifty percent. And the municipal side is either it's fifty-fifty or under. And in this town, their school budget is at about forty-three percent, and the town is on, on the other side, so.
I think that's a fairly conservative number. The school might be a little bit more than that.
No, actually.
I don't have the numbers in front of me.
We just did.
Bottom line, what's the bottom line number? Oh, thank you.
Well, um.
Labor these, though.
Just for clarity, uh, Dr. Oakley is correct, eleven million dollars out of a total budget of, say, thirty million dollars would come out to somewhere close to that forty percent. However, the one thing to keep in mind is that that school budget doesn't represent the entire school budget, because about four million dollars, you know, we, we have a benefits line, we have insurance lines, we have some other lines that would have to be added. I've never added it, I don't know what the number is, but.
Is that what you meant?
My, my guess is, it probably approaches that fifty.
Oh, utility-wise at the new high school, how, I know, some of the electric bills I saw are rather overwhelming. And I will say, I go to work at three in the morning sometimes, and the building's lit up like a Christmas tree. Is there a reason for that, first of all, and where do we, um, you know, I, I answer the question all the time about the solar field. I mean, the solar panels going on the roofs and whatnot, and I realize, I can't remember exactly the rea, I remember the reasoning. You're telling me why they haven't been put on yet, but they are coming. We're not doing it now.
Because of an agreement that was struck by the town accountant, that we cannot do it.
The solar field is covered, is that.
We were, we, we had all intentions, and that's why the roofs are done the way they are, of putting solar panels on there. Um, but, how was, when the agreement was done, um, with the town, we weren't involved in it.
Our school was put on.
The school was put on, the high school was put on, and now we can't do it. So, it was done without us being involved in it.
But would the new school then not producing enough electricity to offset, for us to utilize all the credits?
I just know that the way that the agreement was written, that the town did, without asking for school input, high school cannot now do solar panels, correct?
I, correct, I, I had an RFP, like, pretty much ready to go.
And that was the plan all along, until we found out that.
Yeah, because we had that discussion, because the water department also wants to do solar panels, and we made very clear to them the intent is to lower the use, uh, by the schools and the water department putting panels up. Something we'll definitely have to look into, maybe get legal counsel involved, because that's, that was the intent.
Wasn't it looked into?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's right in the agreement with the solar field, whatever company that is, I don't know the name of it, that it's listed.
So, the overall, so if you look at the pie chart, um, three percent of this, of this budget is utilities.
Yeah, where, so, where are we?
Is that, is the, how does that compare to what it was last year, say?
A couple things with the new building, and we find out, once you get a new building, that there's a learning curve, because everything is programmable, everything's on a program, you're getting people in. Um, they're still learning the programs, they're still doing those things. This is the, all part of the whole punchless process and stuff. So, believe me, we know, because we live, because, you know, Mr. Hurley, he's a great neighbor, he's right there, but he lets us know that at three in the morning when he gets up, that, so, we're working on it, it's getting better. But, um, so it will even out, but we're not, we're not way over.
No.
The whole, the whole budget.
We were kind of in line with, we did put in a big increase last year for the electricity.
I remember we had that discussion, and we, we accounted for it, it's just, it'd be nice if we could get it down.
It would be very nice.
The money that came from the solar farm, right?
Right.
We could include that, those credits.
Yeah, but we seem to be, I did increase it for next year, um, it's kind of a little waiting game, but, um, right now, we've spent a hundred and fifty-three thousand on electricity at the high school for this year. So, and we budgeted two hundred and seven thousand.
I know I talked to, you know, over there, the fisherman over there, East Bridge Water, and of course, uh, you know, they built that school before ours. It takes about two or three years before they know, they really know where they are, as far as all that stuff. And, and most of you, you work the best you can with estimates, and how you can real, really know what, uh, what the true cost is.
I don't think we're gonna be very far off, and it's gonna be, I mean, it's gonna be better because, you know, it's nice, obviously, to have a brand-new school, but the new systems, because it's all programmable, it's all technology, is a lot tougher to learn than just shutting the light switch off like you did in the old building. You know, there's places, it's like, I just wanna turn a light switch on, why can't I do that? Oh, because it's not programmable, it's connected to them, and we gotta learn all that stuff, so.
Well, that was over there at the, uh, at the place of fire station, we had everything on the one switch, and over there, and they just put that, we had to change that. And after we had that new thing there, of course, now, with the automation and all the other stuff, all this stuff is on automatic, you had to kind of figure it. It's like the heating system.
Same with the heat, which.
Program those heating system, and, you know, you almost have to have an engineer there, right, to figure out all this stuff.
Well, you're right. Julie, Julie's working very hard.
Yeah, I know, she's a hard worker.
I have no other questions.
I have no other questions.
I'll motion move on to the finance committee.
Move to second, are those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, ladies.
Thanks for your time.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Still all very, very proud of our school system.
Yes, we are.
You all do a great job, thank you.
West is best. Okay, Messiah Tally, you're up next, the town clerk, um, now we're now ten minutes. Geez, twenty minutes, no, ten minutes.
Ten.
All right, we're making up time, we're making up time. Okay, so, um, sixteen-ten, so we're gonna talk about all three of your budgets at once, we're going on all three of them at the same time. So, all you really need to do is go through your budget and anything that's a variance, is what we really wanna know about. If it's the same, then, you know, it's the same, right?
So, we can start with the town clerk's budget. Um, you can see that it actually went down. The only thing it went up in is the, um, the raises because of, well, the step raise for my assistant because of contractual, and then the raise that I put in for, for myself, otherwise everything stayed the same. You have any questions on that?
I have no questions.
I have none.
Okay, and then the next budget, where you see a lot of change, is the elections and registration budget, and that's due to the fact that we have three elections next year. So, um, I based it off of what was spent three years ago, and, uh, that's where you see the difference. Um, there is one extra thing that was put in there, because there's a new mandate from the new election law that we could have, um, we could be chose to be audited after the presidential election. And if we're one of the lucky lottery winners and we get, um, audited, then we have to. And if we're one of the lucky lottery winners and we get audited, then we have to do an audit of our election, which basically would be run based on the same thing as a recount.
Which one is?
That is in election officials, and it is also in police details because we would have to have a police detail at that audit as well.
Oh, right here, okay. That's, that's a mandate.
So, it's basically based on an extra election if that occurred and we were chosen in the lottery.
So, the cost would be, the cost of the election?
You know, I went back. I asked Marion Leonard. I asked Nancy Morrison. None, none of them have ever done a recall.
Right.
So, I basically had to base it off of the fact that it could possibly cost as much as to run another election.
Okay. All right, and so how, like, when will we find out if we've been randomly selected?
Right after the presidential election.
Oh, wow. All right. Well, good luck with that. Sorry.
Do you have any other questions? I mean, it's pretty self-explanatory. We had an increase in the cost to program our AccuVote machines. They're on their way out. They're not being, they're being, not being as supported as well. They don't make the platform. They don't make the new machines anymore. So, there's an increase.
Yeah, the last, um...
Yeah, precinct one.
Getting the...
Ballots in. If you were, if you were in precinct one, you saw...
Get back out. Who they want, what the machine wanted you to vote for. So, shock back out at you.
But despite that, we only had to hand count one ballot. So, I mean, we had two hu- two thousand, two hundred and eighty-four voters, and we only had one ballot that had to be hand counted, even though precinct one machine tried to give us a high time. So, I, I'm in the process of looking at the possibility of we have to get new machines because we're not gonna service them anymore. So, there's an increase in the cost for that because we have to fish around to find. And everything else is basically just the total increase of the number of elections that are gonna be in the year.
And he held all those machines now. I know we're gonna talk about it tomorrow, but...
Held, are they? Well, I couldn't find any paperwork as to when they were purchased, but I talked to Marion Leonard, and she's estimating eighteen years. And then she thinks she bought them.
I remember sitting there with a hand counting, so that's...
We got our money's worth, huh?
Any other questions? No?
I have none.
Okay, so then...
Twenty, that's Memorial.
And that's an increase of a thousand dollars because we're hosting the parade this year. And based on what Nancy has spent in the past, that's about what it costs to run the parade.
No questions.
Move this to the finance. I have none.
All three of you?
I'll second.
Move to second, or all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is fourteen, ten, right on time. On time, eight twenty-five. The Board of Assessors.
Steve?
Hello, gentlemen.
How you guys doing today?
Right on time. That's good. You guys are getting good at this.
Yes, that's...
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Chop, chop. Let's go.
Okay.
Right on time.
Absolutely. We have proposed a budget in front of you with a couple of things that stick out.
Yeah, we're just interested, actually, I didn't tell you guys, but we're just interested in the variances. You know, we have to go, if it's a zero, there's no difference, then we'll just leave it at that, so...
Yeah, and I mean, like, the, on the clerical salaries is, that's contractual. The big increase you'll notice, if we can get it through, we're trying to put our principal assessor, John Donahue, from the part-time contractual to a full-time position. Last year, we increased his hours from eighteen to twenty-four, and there was the increase in pay. And then we did a little bit of research on the other, other towns nearby. And like I said a million times, myself, with my full-time position as a fee appraiser, I visit a lot of these towns and saw that the, every one in the area has a principal assessor like John Donahue, plus the vendor that does their work for him. In this case here, the town of West Bridgewater has Patriot properties, and we have John as a, as a, as a part-time principal assessor. John and I talked, and we met with the town manager. We would think it'd be in the best interest of the town of West Bridgewater to bring John in full-time if we could. And there's a whole host of reasons why, you know, I'm saying that as both the chairman of the Board of Assessors and as a professional full-time appraiser. It's hard to say on the exact money, but the, going into the position full-time, most assuredly over the next so many years, I can't tell you exactly how, how much would be cost-effective. We're planning on, with John's past practice of assessing, bringing some of the work that our consultant does, Patriot, bringing some of that work in-house to try to save some money from them. We could see them over the next few years, you know, going up on the consultant fees. So, we're hoping to offset that by, for example, they, they charge us money to do inter-year adjustments. We're hoping, once John gets on board and gets his feet wet full-time, that some of these communities that have a full-time person, they actually do some of that work in-house. Rather than give it out to a vendor, they do it in-house, and we're hoping we can do that. Oversee their work. John does the building permit work now. Does a good job. We save money there. And for me, an important thing is, it would save me a little bit, the, some of our court work. Where, you know, I've gone into, into Boston for the town, and, you know, and I don't mind doing it. It's part of my position. With John's full-time, he has the same license as I do appraisal-wise. He could do, you know, a little, a little bit more of that work and absolutely save the town money. I testified town, we were charged as the taxpayer, or the, the claim of five thousand dollars. So, if we bring a lot, some of that work in-house, some of the inter-year adjustment work, the analysis work, and, you know, different things, a little bit of the time, we're hoping that the, the job going full-time can be cost-effective. You know, I can't give you an exact dollar amount, but I tend to say that, you know, if we didn't do anything about it over the next, say, five or six years, the Patriot consulting fees would probably just, you know, spiral upward. Right now, we're giving them under, you see, under, under the consultant service, under contractual services, we're giving them seventy-seven hundred dollars for, I'm sorry, part of the ninety-two, ninety-two hundred dollars in line, fifty-three ninety-eight. Part of that is for a license fee that we have no control of. So, whether John does the inside work or not, we still, that, that license fee is for us to use their software. You know, so, we're saying, if we're gonna pay that, then, you know, maybe use it more than we are, maybe bring some of that work in-house. So, when you see the budget in front of you, the appointed, the appointed official is a lot increased. And something else to be said about that, we're proposing a starting salary of sixty-eight-five. And we have done a salary survey of the, you know, surrounding towns, the comparable, the East Bridgewater's, the Bridgewater's, the whole works, et cetera. And some of those towns, truthfully, have had people sitting there that are at a much higher rate. But, you know, the starting salaries can be, you know, that or above, and we, hopefully, you know, you kind of say, all right, if you start like that and had to advertise, you might get what you pay for. Avon's turned that job over three times in the last two years because they're not paying nothing. So, you kind of get what you pay for. Here, we have an experienced guy that's willing to start at that lower rate, work the something higher, do a good job for the town, the board, and, and a long one saves some money.
I have a question on that. In the past, I've asked why the assessor hasn't been the, the employee, hasn't been declared department head. One of the answers is, he's not full-time. He's only twenty hours. As we continue to try to align every department with a clear employed department head that's responsible to the taxpayers on a daily basis, that operates in town, should oversee the staff that operates in his town, is the board gonna finally declare as, and will you support that?
Boy, you got me in the spot there, Jerry.
I do, because to be honest with you, if he's not gonna be a department head, I don't support the increase. If he's going to be, then I can justify it.
Sure. A couple of things on that is, you know, there's been waivers on that because, only because, you know, as the board, not so much as a department head, but we oversee the department, and we do, we do the hiring and, and the firing.
Like we do.
Yeah, right. So, you know, I wouldn't, you know, I'm much saying that he shouldn't be, but it's, as a department head, you know, we'd still have, you know, moves over him. So, I was waving on that. But being in the full-time position, I would think that'd be a lot easier, you know, for me or the Board of Assessors to say, sure.
I just don't think you have someone that runs the department with secretaries that don't answer to him. It just doesn't make any sense. It's not the way you run a business. And the way you run a business is accountability, and that's the way this board has been moving over the last six years. And it would be nice to align.
And I agree, but, I mean, we've had accountability. Anytime's a problem, you know, I mean, we're in talk, you know, that, thank God, there's been a lot of problems. But, you know, with the staff, or certain taxpayers, we've had a few issues. And, you know, it's our job as elected officials or paid officials to handle the taxpayers.
To, to your credit, you're very active and hands-on. Tomorrow, you decide not to rerun, and you have someone that says, I'm gonna take the, I'm gonna take the stipend. I'm gonna show up at the meetings once a month, and that's that.
I, I agree.
And you can operate, just like we've decided that David's the department head. The, the department heads work under him. And, you know, it's not taking anything away from the board members. The board members still operate as the CEOs of the department, of, as the board of directors. It's just the day-to-day operator should be someone that's, that's paid to be there and is a full-time employee. So, I'd, I'd like to see that happen.
Yeah, and...
I know you're the only one, one board member, but...
But I, I, I would think, you know, in that full-time position, that probably, I mean, it's a good point to bring up. And, you know, in my opinion, it almost goes without saying, now he's full-time. Now, we oversee that. Thank God, we got a small office, so it shouldn't come into play too much.
Thank you.
So, moving on, you also have a...
We had...
Postage?
Yeah, and that was kind of, we, we were, we talked back and forth, maybe with the previous town manager or in the finance, that we wanted to, you know, I was against it because we were making a little bit of money, you know, putting our stuff online. So, we finally said to Patriot, all right, we want, we want to put you online with our property record cards. But we didn't want to do it all at once to, to kill the town, the budget, and the money. So, we said, we'll start with the property record cards, which are now online. And then, once, once we're master list, you know, kind of more compliant, we'll bring the maps in. So, the increase there is that we've held it down to the property record cards for the last three years. And now, like a lot of other towns, and, and they're, they're actually, it's a real good service. We want to bring our, the, the tax maps online. We didn't want to do it all at once. We wanted to say, maybe let's try it for a couple of years, just the property record cards. Like I said a minute ago, that state system, the Oliver and Tyon Bond that works with us, has gotten a lot more sophisticated. I work on myself, with my, the course of my business, and it's excellent, and it's something that'll benefit the taxpayers.
If I could just ask a question about that. I know there was some fear that that was gonna hurt revenue by putting them online. My, my issue was a freed up people's time to do the work, so with the lack of increase in staff. Has it really been a detriment to the department?
I, I can't say for sure, but I, this I do know, when I was buttoning heads on that back a few years ago, on the property record cards and maybe the maps, no, I'm not sure, Jerry, we took in about roughly maybe eight hundred bucks a year, you know? And, you know, obviously, every, every little bit helps. So, I was wanting to last in the area and say, you know, let's, let's now put them online right now, and we finally did. So, if it's hurting the revenue, it's not, not by a lot.
Especially with the cost of ink and...
Right, and it's giving people, you know, it's giving the staff a little bit more. But on the other end of that, it's so much better for the taxpayers. You know, even if we're losing, you know, this or that out of the office coffers, the taxpayers to have, to go online, have the ability to look at stuff and say, wait a minute, something's wrong here, you know, appraisers using that, absolutely.
Great, thank you.
Good. So, any other questions?
Oh, they do a fine job over there. Like I said, they, I really appreciate it, but Steve does, and John is...
Got a group down, good group downstairs, yeah.
Into the Palox Board and a lot of time.
Yeah.
He puts a, he puts a lot of time in for, for not too much pay.
Yeah, and we just want, you know, obviously, with that, you know, the overlay account, we wanna, you know, keep that tight to the vest and, and work that way, which is a big consideration, and that's getting a lot better.
I also did notice there was quite a bit of outreach to make sure people's cards were correct and, you know, encouraging them to go online. Make sure they're being, you know, not being overtaxed for things that may not exist or doesn't exist anymore, so that's great. And I've also heard some great things from people that have come in for, for abatements, that, that they were treated very well, so thank you.
Yeah, and, and that's always been the case. That's nothing new. They're really, you know, some people might have a, a different agenda, but in most cases, they're, you know, they're, they're treated well and, and get, you know, any questions they have, they get good answers. We've got a good staff downstairs.
I will make a motion that we pass it on to the finance committee with our recommendation that the, if the position does increase to full-time, that that would be declared as a department head.
Very good. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you so much.
Enjoy the rest of your night. Thank you.
You're all ready for tomorrow? St. Patrick's Day. It should be on the other side, though, close to your heart.
I had a professor tell me you can never be too early for a season.
Yeah, we got...
I went with the town colors again.
Okay, I'm gonna wait till eight forty for the community preservation. Are they scheduled to...
Yeah, I'm supposed to be here, yes.
All right, I'll wait, I'll wait another five minutes. We can probably go into section one, annual town election warrant. Entertainer motion to accept the warrant.
Second?
Move to second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous. Entertainer motion to approve minutes of the February third, two thousand sixteen, for select.
Is that the one I was on?
No, you weren't at the seventeenth.
Okay, second?
Move second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I will move to approve the minutes of the February seventeenth, two thousand sixteen, meeting.
So, move.
Move in seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Two and one, extension, right. Entertainer motion for approve the minutes of February twenty-fifth.
So, move.
Wait, second.
Move second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, except for review. Minutes of March second, moved?
Second?
Seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Communication and reports from boards, commissions, and town officials. We have in our pack a letter of recommendation from the open space committee to appoint Kevin Parker to, to that committee. A discussion around that?
So... I'll second.
Move in second. Now, is that a, is that to fill a space, or, so how many spaces are left on that committee? Is that...
I can tell you right now.
I'd just like to point out that Mr. Parker's done a number of community projects for the, recently, a lot of work down on the rail trail. And there was some, probably didn't read about it, but there was some vandalism on the walkway to Esther Drive. Then, I believe Mr. Parker and his crew got together and did all the repairs for us, and we all know.
It'll be, after that, it'll be full.
Oh, good, good. Okay, so moved in seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Two unanimous.
Maybe we should, well, we got that as a sendable letter of thanks for all these things that Jerry's done. I'll make that a motion.
I'll second.
Move second. All those in favor?
Aye.
So, it'd be a letter, you know, telling me he's been appointed, but then, you know, that's good. Yeah, great. Thank you for bringing that up, Select and Lawrence. Act on a letter from West Bridgewater Middle Senior High School to hold their annual scholarship toll, toll road fundraiser on Saturday, March seventh. Locations intersection of Howard and Spring Street, eight to ten a.m., and transfer station, eight to noon.
Motion approved.
Move seconded? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I believe there was something in there about, yeah, that they need to make sure that they wear in their vests and all that. For safety reasons. Invitation from the WBYAA to attend opening day celebration on Saturday, April thirtieth, at ten-thirty. So, there's an invitation here to the Board of Selectmen to attend the opening day celebration and the parade.
So, I'm ordered.
I will attend.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll be there.
Okay. You guys have a good time.
You're not gonna come down to zip?
I might.
She might be in costume. We might not recognize her.
Yeah, I've been in, I've known, I've been known to be in costume. You know, the Clifford, and then there's the Wildcat, you know, all that good stuff. Easter Bunny, too. Act on a letter from Frank Nelson to hold the annual Christopher's five K run and walk for diabetes on Monday, May thirtieth.
Motion approve the request.
Second.
Move in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
And you had to check with the, with the police chief there, you know?
Yeah, everything's in order. I think that's in this lineup, isn't it?
Chief, while you're here, every year, we, the Pan-Mass... Pan Mass Challenge comes through town, but we never get a request. Do they request from you to, uh, to...
We, we correspondents.
Okay. If you could forward that to us next time it comes to you, because we like to ask them to take down their signage and everything afterwards, which they usually leave up until the following year, which for the other bike races that go through town, it's an inconvenience.
Okay, um, is this community preservation people here? Do we know? Good, yeah, why don't you check on that? Uh, I'm gonna move down to correspondents while we're checking on, uh, the next budget. Okay, act on a letter from the Disabled American Veterans to hold their annual fundraising event on September sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, at the Market Basket.
Motion approve the request.
Second.
Move the second, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then the last one we have here are the correspondents is act on a request from Tom Reed, the Turkey Trot Race Director, to hold their annual Turkey Trot on Saturday, November nineteenth, starting at ten AM at the Forest Church.
Move to approve the request.
I'll second.
Move the seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so we're gonna move back to the budgets. We had scheduled at, um, eight forty, community preservation. I don't, I don't see those folks here. So Administrator Gang, would you care to go through that? For us, please? It's, uh, budget... No, it's not. It doesn't have a number.
Yeah, it's page nineteen.
Okay.
So, they, uh, they re... Somebody's outside now.
Well, let's see if it's them, just in case. Page nineteen.
Hi Cheryl.
How are you?
How you doing?
Good, nice to see you.
Nice to see you, too.
Did you know you were forever gonna be in charge of this?
I know, really, you didn't realize that.
No, I did not.
Yeah, one of those lifetime appointments.
It's all good, though.
Do a great job.
It's all good.
It is good.
Great job.
It is good. There's a lot of good stuff coming up, too.
Okay, so would you care to talk about it?
Have you've all seen the memo?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, it's now packets.
This is a list of, um, projects that we, we had a meeting, um, about a month ago. Um, so Annie is continuing with the record preparation, so, um, but there was a vote to increase it to ten thousand. So, and it was, um, passed all in favor. Um, so it's a good thing. The assessors are gonna do the same thing with some of their records. So it was passed for twenty thousand, um, and it's the assessors' valuation books. Because it's in pretty rough shape, so it's the same process for the preservation of the records, town records. Stuff you have to keep forever, um, I think they're down in the vault. Um, and then I'm sure everybody knows about the Excuse me. Pleasant Hills Cemetery vandalism. So Lauren Delaney, the superintendent in charge of the cemetery, came in with a, a great, uh, proposal, uh, for thirty, she's asking for thirty-five thousand dollars. We're gonna have it looked at by the preservation planner, because it's not a town-owned property. Um, but she did some great research, and she actually did find, I think it was in Brewster, she found, um, that the project was passed even without putting an API on the, on the property, kind of similar to, I don't know if you remember the church property. Um, but I'm sure that's something that I think, I know everybody is mad about this and would like to see that, you know, everything restored and, um, you know, see what can be helped over there.
Great request.
Um, that John Delano with the, um, Conservation Commission is interested in purchasing the lot over on River Street. It's across from the Keith House, um, and it would be used for maybe a community garden, um, canoe launch, that type of thing.
It also adds much-needed parking for the Keith House. I know they've worked with the Historic Commission, that, that, uh, society that would, uh, give parking right across the street that they currently don't have.
Oh, okay.
Well, that would be good.
Yeah.
So he, they would be raising forty-five thousand towards that, and, uh, so they're requesting seventy-five for, um, to pay the full one-twenty that it's up for sale for. Um, and then, um, the fire department put an application in for sixty thousand dollars for, uh, a memorial project using the nine eleven, uh, the piece of the building. And they've done some great work. They've worked with a, a local company, I can't think of the name of it, but they've developed a place where people can go sit, um, you know, where people can learn about it and
Right.
you know, um, so they're asking for sixty thousand.
Yeah, they're great, so, uh, great, uh, real great request.
Yes.
Cheryl, is your committee taking action on any of these, uh, support or not support, or?
Support.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, so it's already voted as support.
Yes, there were a few, um, I think we, there were two noes on the purchase of the land along River Street. Um, but the majority, we had a form for, um, for approval, but, so, and we had more in favor. So all of these, we'll be preparing warrant articles for presentation at town meeting, so.
Great.
Right.
Anticipating, good.
Who were their concerns, the ones that were opposed?
Um, I think it was the purchase price. They thought it was too high.
I got a question on that. You know, they throw a price out there, is it any negotiation in the price of these things?
I think that this has been on seal for one-twenty for quite some time, and I know they've been talking to them for a long time about this lot, so...
Unfortunately, like anything when it comes to the town, we have to approve the money before you can even negotiate. And unfortunately, it's a public record, so people know what the dollar amount approved is. Doesn't mean we have to spend it, doesn't mean we have to accept that, uh, that price, but...
Mr. Gang?
Yeah, just a quick question. I haven't had a chance to review all the documents yet. Town clerk normally does five thousand dollars a year for record-keeping and preservation. This one's going up to ten thousand. Is that because they're going to be preserving twice as much as they normally do, or what is the difference?
It would be. It would, it would definitely add, uh, um, that extra amount. Yeah.
Is, is there, do we know what it is that they're actually preserving? Because they do it every year.
Um, it's, yeah, it's usually listed, um, I think it's the birth, death, and marriage records. And they started at the, you know, the very beginning, and they're working their way up. Um, so just that extra five thousand would just be another extra amount of
Motion to pass it on to the Finance Committee with our recommendation.
Move second, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. Thank you for continuing to end that up.
You're very welcome.
I'd like to kind of wait till eight fifty-five in case someone was gonna be here for that. No, I mean, somebody from the public. Um, so I'm gonna move over to, uh, capital budget requests, reviews? Oh, wait, I gotta back up on the agenda. Public comment period. Is there anybody in the public that has a comment?
Yeah, we got, we got the chief out here in full dress tonight.
Very good, very good.
You're always full dressed, just uniformed.
Uniform, right. Um, capital budget request, over to you, Administrator Gang.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. Uh, Mallory is handing out a handout.
Thank you.
Because for whatever reason, the original handout that's in the packet, only fifty percent of it printed. We still don't understand why. So, in any event, uh, tomorrow afternoon, tomorrow at eleven o'clock.
What do you mean?
Um, what's inside your packet on page sixty-one?
Yeah.
That only represents half of the requests. And we didn't catch it until right before the meeting.
Oh, okay, alright.
And I still don't know how that happened.
Alright, got it, yeah.
We are writing a letter to Microsoft.
There we go.
In any event, so I've, I've given you a, a handout that you'll see that all of the capital budget requests that came in are totaling over six hundred thousand dollars. Uh, it's unfortunate because we're not gonna be able to afford all of them, we're not gonna certainly be able to accommodate all the requests. Uh, but this was an overview, just an overview to the Board of Selectmen, so you are aware as to what the requests from the respective departments are. The presentation's set tomorrow at eleven o'clock. Because of the number of, of presentations, it'll probably be a two to three-hour meeting. In the following week, after the committee does its due diligence, we'll vote on it. But again, we usually, since I've been here, my recommendation has been that we always pay out of free cash. We pay for all of the requests. And you'll see there in the top left-hand corner, we have a little over a million dollars of free cash available, which means in theory we could afford to pay for everything, but with only four and fifty-one thousand dollars left over, you'll recall that we always transfer three hundred and fifty thousand dollars over to offset the school debt in behalf of the taxpayer. Uh, we also normally have some additional requests. The, the police department will have a web task force that we pay for. Uh, we have an OPEB account that the town treasurer is required to pay for, which is about a hundred thousand dollars a year, so we won't have enough free cash to fund all of the requests. Uh, I don't, haven't looked at all of the information, so I don't, I can't answer questions as to, uh, any of the specific requests at this point. Again, the committee will meet tomorrow, but this was an FYI to the board that, um, you may receive calls over the next week um, as people say, hey, um, mine has not been approved, or it's not gonna be approved, but we just can't fund them all. I mean, six hundred thousand dollars is the largest amount of requests that I've seen in the three years that I've been here, and, and, um, again, anybody can ask, but we're just not gonna do it.
So the voting machines, wasn't that in the budget?
No, this is, well, this is, would be out of the capital budget, so this would be a capital budget article item.
Wasn't there a line item that they ever built that?
That's for maintenance.
Repair maintenance.
Oh, that was repair, okay.
So, this would be an upgrade to the existing machines, which, for lack of a better term, I'll say that they're old analog machines. These are gonna be new optical digital machines. Uh, it is a recommendation from the state for obvious reasons to make sure that we don't have voting discrepancies in the future.
Yeah, right, I get that one. What is Lucas and SCBA bottles?
Uh, the Lucas compression machine, the approved one for the fire department two years ago. Basically, the old-fashioned, somebody puts your hands on your chest and is, is able to do the compression system, uh, process. This here is a machine that you would actually wrap around a person's body, and it's supposed to be much more efficient and effective than if somebody is doing it by hand. Um, again, I know we approved one a couple of years ago, so I've not spoken to the chief as to why he needs two, but we'll find out tomorrow.
I know you brought that to GPS, but, you know, I've, I've had a second thoughts on that. I mean, I, I think, you know, our departments are small enough that the superintendent, uh, should, uh, you know, reign over that, and, and if there's any problems in there, uh, uh, I don't think that we need to spend twenty-five thousand dollars for that. I, I just don't think so. Use that in another, another word, in my opinion, so, but I noticed that, uh, that's in there.
Well, you said the committee...
Two lawnmowers there for the, uh, forestry. I know they're taking on the school. Uh, you know, uh, I don't know.
What do you mean, they're taking all the school?
Well, you know, more, more work for the school over there. That, they did the school, but now, I don't know if it's in a bigger way now, but the need for two lawnmowers versus one lawnmower, you know? But, hey.
So this committee is meeting tomorrow?
It is, so the committee hasn't...
Yes.
Yes, um, the selectmen are represented by Selectman Lawrence. Uh, we, we don't have all the information yet, so I, I don't have, I, I can't answer those specific questions.
Ellen, I'd highly recommend, if you wanna see the GPS system, the police department has it, um, but I've gone down to see Lucini's, which is actually a superly impressive, uh, uh, program. Can tell you if the car's idling too long, if it goes out of town, if it's, uh, broken down. You can locate men if you can't find them by radio. I think it's a, I, I've asked years ago, I remember Vic offered to come in and give us a presentation if we wanted, if there was, uh, really no support for it. Uh, Bill Lucini offered to do the same thing. I think, uh, it's a great, great system that should be in the vehicles, so I strongly encourage and endorse it.
You okay there, Mallory?
Oh, I'm just at the point where...
Yeah, yeah, right. Okay, so the media, uh, the capital budget committee's gonna meet tomorrow, and Selectman Lawrence is our representative.
That's correct, so at a later date, whatever is approved, we'll come back and follow this board for your approval before you place it on the warrant.
Very good.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Right on time, eight fifty-five. Department and Animal Control Budget, gentlemen, wanna come forward? Alright, doing solo, huh?
Uh, I guess so, yeah.
You got backup over there, though.
Yeah.
Beautiful backup. In case anything goes wrong.
I don't have a specific question about the budget. Um, I just want me kinda say where the increases are and...
Um, so what I've told everybody else, um, just go through what the, the variances are, you know, the large variances. We don't need if it's a zero.
Right, I have everything. What you're gonna see is basically, you see an appointed official with the chief of police, which you see right there is dropped by sixty-one thousand dollars. Okay, that's really hasn't dropped. The difference is, before we, uh, made the appointment with chief, we didn't know where it was gonna come from, so that money, that sixty-one thousand is in permanent salaries, because everybody besides the chief and the clerical is in permanent salaries. So if somebody's gonna move out, that sixty-one thousand is basically in the permanent salary line, because we didn't know who that was gonna be until that point.
So it's really the net of that?
Yeah, so you can see permanent salaries went up a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, okay? So that sixty-one thousand dollars is in that figure, so that's why the a hundred and seventy-five thousand is, is up, is up to a hundred and seventy-four, seventy, a hundred and seventy-five thousand. Sixty-one thousand or ten is in that, okay? Plus, at your request, um, and when we came in front of the schools, I mean, with Superintendent Oakley, that they wanted a school resource officer. Or put it into the budget and decide whether we're gonna approve it, the selectmen are gonna approve it, and finance is gonna approve it.
Right.
So, in the permanent salaries, you'll see an additional, let me see my figure here, is fifty-six thousand, three forty is also in permanent salaries for this new SRO position. So you got sixty-one thousand plus fifty-four thousand. In addition, you'll see, um, the increase is somewhere a hundred and, I don't have the figure exactly down.
So really, down of that. Well, what I did was, so I said, so the appointed official and the
If you could, if you could...
salaries, the net of that is ninety-six thousand. But fifty-six thousand of that is the resource officer, so really, that's thirty thousand.
That's right, so if you start out, when you calculate that, it would be good. If you start with the, the, the increase in that line, it's a hundred and eight, seventy-eight thousand, nine fifty-three.
Right.
Okay, you deduct the sixty-one, four-ten, for the, the, the chief's salary is in there, so a hundred and seventy-eight thousand, nine fifty-three.
Yeah, minus the sixty-one, yeah.
Sixty-one thousand, four-ten.
Yeah.
Plus the fifty-six thousand, three forty for the proposed SRO. And that figure is...
One seventy-three.
Is what?
One seventy-three.
No, no, no. So the one seventy-five, the one seventy-eight is the increase. We're gonna deduct the sixty-one thousand, four-ten, that's less from the chief's budget, the chief's line is now in permanent salaries. I'm just trying to show the increase over last year.
Oh, okay.
So, the sixty-one thousand, four-ten, plus fifty-six thousand, three forty.
Yes, I get what you're saying.
Okay?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Is
Hundred and seventeen.
Hundred and seventeen thousand.
Right.
Okay, so now we're only talking fifty-eight thousand dollars increase in that line, okay? Let me see.
Right, which is what, your overall, your bottom-line budget is a hundred and seventeen thousand.
Right, so basically, the only increase, the only difference, we'll go through these a little, but the only increase basically in the budget without the SRO is around two-point-six percent. Overall budget.
Yeah.
Okay, that's the only increase. Um, and removing from the permanent salary line, that's, that figure shouldn't scare a lot of people, because it's just basically money moved around. You know, so, uh, you see general overtime went from sixty to sixty-three thousand. And all I basically did is add two-point-five, you know, the percentage of the increase for contractual. So when I pay somebody overtime, I pay them more money, so that's gonna go up. So you see that in general overtime, you see that in sick time, the holiday pay, vacation, court, because those have to increase with the, with the amount of their... because those have to increase with the, with the amount of their raise that's coming up in July. Um, stipends again, contractual, um, longevity again, contractual, those, those went up a little bit. Um, and if you see on page two, gasoline, line thirty-nine, I actually dropped that.
Yeah.
By ten thousand.
Ten thousand, right.
Because right now, the way we're running with the gas prices are, I think I can take some money away from that and bring thirty-five, that kind of fluctuates each year, but I think we can save that next year with the gas prices.
So, does that mean you'll be giving us some money back this year?
Giving you money back this year?
Yeah, cause gasoline is low.
Yes, there could be, there could be money back this year, depending on we spend it for a project. We never waste, we never waste money. There's never a waste. Over the course of the last four or five years, when I'm looking at spending, you see that uniforms and equipment are always way over budget. What was, what's the line item budget? I raised that a little bit, to three thousand. I raised training expenses up fifteen hundred dollars. Um, training, doing ten thousand dollars of training, and the size of our department is, is, is very quickly, easily spent. Obviously, we save money in other areas to be able to supplement the training, so you're not saying, so I upped that a little bit. And equipment replacement is the same thing. I mean, if you look at our equipment replacement, um, we spend a lot more money than the three thousand dollars every year.
How about I ask you a question? I see on, on the training in, uh, two thousand fourteen, the actual spending was twenty-four thousand. Do you know why, why it was so big that year?
Well, like I said, it's training, the way we work a lot of things is, is if we save money in other areas, we save money in sick time, we save money on how we position the men, um, we're able to give a little more training that year. So it fluctuates on basically the money we save in other areas. If we have a bad year, that number will go shrinking down. We, we, we put the actual figures in the actual line items to be, so that they're reflecting on exactly what we paid for. So we're not just hiding them in other lines to, you know, make it look like, you know, that's being a stat.
One of the things that we take out of that line also is, is, um, when the officers go to the academy. We sent three officers to the academy in twenty-fourteen, says nine thousand dollars right there for those three officers.
Great, thank you.
What, what you should also look at too, over the overall budget, we only went up two-point-six percent, okay? But contractually, step increases and the two-and-a-half percent raise that they're entitled to in July is sixty-six thousand dollars over last year's budget. So if you really wanna look at this budget compared to last year, they're pretty much the same. Cause I, I had to go up sixty-six thousand dollars in actual contractual raises and step increases. And I'll be able, I was able to reflect that on a lower percentage, because we have new people coming in at, at lower rates than people that had left. So, you'll see this year is actually gonna be the lower end of the budget, cause next year, I don't anticipate seeing too many new people. So, next year, unfortunately, the, the percentage will go up because of these step increases. So we're saving a little this year because of new people.
Vic, it should be the, the new chief and the contract has been negotiated. Is it budgeted, uh, flat from the current chief?
Yes.
Okay.
But there's an additional, what was it, twenty-one thousand, I think?
The actual figure for the chief's base salary was based on the lieutenant's salary and the twenty-one thousand to equal the actual base salary. Not the actual, um, end-of-year salary, I guess.
Which is this, so, or the budget, if you look on the detail?
On the detail side of it, you'll see it. Twenty-one thousand four forty-six.
Unknown chief.
Right.
So that difference.
Okay.
Okay.
And that's on his base. That's on the base.
Yeah.
You also see in there that is, uh, in the budget here, is that promotion for sergeant lieutenant, you'll see a figure there, forty thousand nine twenty, because now, we're gonna have a patrol move to sergeant, a sergeant with lieutenant, so I built that into the budget, so that it's unknown now, so that's why I made it so online, because I don't know exactly who it's gonna be, uh, when it's gonna be. I mean, and that figure could fluctuate, cause that means we're gonna make it as of July first. So if we make it, you know, August first, or Ju-, you know, September first, that figure could go a little smaller. But like I said, basically, the budget is, is similar to last year. It's actually a little less probably because of the increases that we're absorbing.
It's a hundred, well, a hundred and seventeen, but that's.
But a hundred and seventeen.
That's the difference there. I get that.
Okay.
Any further questions?
Oh, move it on to the finance committee.
Moved.
I'll second.
Second. Any further discussion?
I, I, I do have a few questions. The, the resource officer that's in the budget, uh, would that be, um, a new officer, or would that be open to the, to internal offices first?
No, no, we post it. We post all positions. Um, I had discussions, uh, with Pat, uh, Dr. Oakley, about how we're going to sit down. We, we're gonna sit down together. Uh, once we get the application tool put in for the position, and we'll sit down together and decide what's best for, you know, the, the position. And then we backfill that with a new position, so it wouldn't be somebody off the street, it would be somebody we have in the building now.
The salary, though, is at the same as, uh, recent officers, so would you have to select from there?
Well, no, because what I base that, that fifty-six thousand dollars on is I plan to put it in the mid-range, so whether we get a brand-new guy or we get somebody transfer with a, with a degree, you know what I mean? So that figure, um, could go a tad higher, but it could be a little lower, too. But if it goes a little tad higher, I think we can absorb it, you know, but I had it put in the mid-range.
Does that typically come out of a police budget for the other surrounding communities that happen?
Well, I've heard it both ways, and, and I had a discussion with Dr. Oakley about this, because unfortunately, with the chief of police, a new chief came in and would say, we had a school's resource officer in place. The new chief says, we don't need that. He can pull that back without Dr. Oakley's permission, without any permission, just cause he feels what's based for public safety. So now, if the, the school was paying half of that, and the new chief came in and said, I don't want that, and pulls him back, now the schools are paying for something that's not there in their building. And vice versa. Now, if the new superintendent came in and said, we don't want police in here, I think it's totally, you know, and, and they, I, I mean, it's their school. They could say the same thing, so now they say, well, we don't want this, and they come back. Now, I don't have half the money to, to pay for it. So, my thing was, put it in the police budget. Regardless of how we do it, it's coming from the police office. Cause this person's a police officer. He's not a school teacher. He, I mean, he, he teaches classes, but he's still a police officer. He's still gonna come to road call. He's gonna inform us what's going on in the school. You know, he's not gonna be locked in the schools. He's gonna be a police officer and assist the schools. So I thought that was the best way to do it, is put it in one budget, then we don't have to worry about, you know, maybe some change in the, in, in, in the political areas or what have you.
Thank you. Motion to move on to the finance committee?
Yeah, we already moved.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
You want K nine?
Yeah.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Animal control, sorry.
Yeah, animal control. I, there's no changes over last year.
Okay.
Um, so they're staying the same.
Sorry.
We have a new, we had, we had, we have a different procedure going forward. Um, I wrote bids for the new animal control, which we're gonna be putting out shortly, to clean up some areas that we've had trouble with, but other than that, everything stays the same.
Motion to pass on to the finance committee.
Second.
Move the second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, we'll be on right on time. Twelve twenty, uh, what's the budget?
So, thank you. So the budget that, uh, that I put together for you is basically level funded year over year. Couple of minor adjustments. One is, is that any appointed officials, um, their, their contractual raises are in that line. The real difference in the li-, in the budget is number fifty-one twenty, because as you know, that Mallory is going to be on maternity leave for three to four months, and as we did a handful of years ago, is that we hired somebody else to come in, and we budgeted between forty-eight hundred and five thousand dollars for that, so I did the same budget this year. Uh, whether or not we use a senior tax workup program, or we use somebody off the street, we're not sure yet. But we need to budget for it, so that way we can hire the appropriate person at that time. Other than that, there's really no other changes in the budget.
Okay.
Motion to pass on to the finance committee.
Second.
Move the second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Uh, and the town administrator budget is basically level funded year over year as well. There are only two outlines in it. The change, one is contractual, which is my salary. And the second is a request from me, that as you're aware, that I met with the president of Bridgewater State University two months ago, and I would really like to be able to implement some type of a graduate intern program. So I'm budgeting five thousand dollars for that. My thought process and the utilization of that person for next year is that all of our union contracts are up. And I wanna be able to, as I did three years ago, is to be able to pull similar contracts from other towns and be able to analyze, compare, and contrast, and see exactly where we are that makes sense, based on what their recommendations will be. So with that said, I'm looking for, I'm looking to bring that person in. The reason I like the program is twofold. One is, is that at five thousand dollars, it's not a lot of money. There are no additional tangible benefits that we have to pay, for example, sick time, vacation time, or healthcare benefits, unlike when we hire a full-time person. The second item is, is that if we begin and initiate this internship program and begin a program with the college, I think it's a resource that has not been used in the past, where three, four, or five years from now, we'll have three, four, or five different individuals that have come through our, our town. And at a later date, as we need, uh, we need individuals to hire, this might be a good pool of people to be able to contact, cause we've already worked with them. So, um, I've, I've added that into the budget.
Seems like a good idea to me.
Motion approved. Pass on to the finance committee.
Move the second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Uh, finance committee is level funded year over year.
Okay, move, move that to the finance committee.
Move the second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And the finance committee reserve is level funded year over year as well.
Move that to the finance committee.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Second, where Jerry can get it out.
Hey, yeah. Sorry.
Uh, towards the back of your book is a yellow tab named eighty-two hundred local aid, um, estimates. On page one, you will see that the total estimated difference is, um, about five-point-six million dollars from the state, which would be an increase of five-hundred-and-thirty-three thousand dollars, or about ten-and-a-half percent. This is what Dr. Oakley was referring to earlier, where the bulk of that increase is coming from chapter seventy funds, or about five-hundred-and-four thousand dollars. And I don't wanna misconstrue what I was saying earlier. I think that getting this additional money from the state if it passes is excellent. My only concern is, is that whenever we, we should be looking at funding the school for what they need and finding a way to be able to afford it, as opposed to just saying, well, because you're getting half a million dollars, we should have a half a million dollar increase. Now, that wasn't what they were saying, because they passed their budget before they knew this number. But I just wanna make sure for anybody who's listening out there, that I wasn't trying to base one on the other. The reality is, is that the House and the Senate still have to reconcile their budget. This is a substantial increase. It is ten percent year over year. And I don't expect that it's probably going to pass once it goes through the entire budget season. But at this point, the number looks good, so I'm certainly hoping that it's going to pass at that number. On page two is our assessments that we get charged from the state. It's only up three thousand dollars, or actually half a percent. When I look at the numbers, it's actually up a little bit lower than it has been in years past. So unfortunately, I anticipate that as the budget process at the state continues to go forward, the assessments will probably go up a little. Our receipts will probably go down a little, but as of right now, you can see that we're in pretty good shape. And it would be real, it would be excellent if it were to stay true to those, those numbers.
This doesn't really require a motion or anything, does it?
No.
More of an FYI.
Just an FYI, okay.
It is, it's just an FYI as to, kind of, the state of the affairs from the state.
Okay, anything further to come before the board?
Honorable, on discussion of the zoning bylaw, is that?
Um, yeah, we did that with, um.
Yeah.
Yes, Mr. Hurley was going to be here this evening. He has a conflict. He won't be here, so at a later meeting, he may be in here to talk about some other issues with the planning board in proposed zoning bylaws.
All right, I will entertain a motion to enter an executive session, not to return to open session for purposes of conducting a strategy session for negotiations with non-union personnel, specifically the administrative assistant and the executive administrative assistant. And for purposes of conducting negotiations with non-union personnel, specifically the town administrator.
Mallory, yes.
Lawrence, yes.
Belloni, yes. Unanimous.